Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Thank you all for coming this evening. It's good to see everyone here. Would you please all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, again, thank you for being here. This meeting is being livestreamed and on cable TV.
Recorded.
And recorded. All are present this evening. And I do not believe I have any notices or letters from the open forum part from the community. Is that correct? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So made.
By Stacy, second.
Second.
By Jonathan. Any comments or discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thanks Enrique. Opposed? That motion carries seven zero. On our consent agenda this evening are the financial of the bank reconciliation statements, building bond investment reports, the approval of the school board minutes, personnel items, candidates for employment, resignations, terminations, and non-renewals as listed, the district retrialments of Michelle Tindall of 21 years and Kenneth Schultz of 17 years, and the leaves of absence, and memberships for the 2021 school year for the Minnesota State High School League, the Minnesota School Board Association membership, the Metro Exu membership renewal, AMSD membership renewal, and Schools for Equity and Education membership. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So made.
By Michael?
By Mary. I'll second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion made by Mary, second by Michael. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven zero. On the resolution of gifts, we have donations from the Prior Lake Rotary of $8,000 for student technology needs, again, from the Prior Lake Rotary for $4,000 for kids company scholarships, from the PTC for $12,000, $1248 for student planners for Westwood Elementary, $40 from Best Buy for Westwood students' materials, and from Fox 9, $1,000 for the Tom Darris Top Teacher of the Year Award for his classroom. Do I have a motion to accept the donations?
So made.
By Stacy, second.
Second.
By Enrique. Anybody, any other comments? Okay, this is a roll call vote. Melissa?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Aye. Jonathan?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero. And we do have a Laker pride this evening.
Oftentimes during the summer, we don't get an opportunity to have students with us. And we are so excited this evening to have several students joining us who are going to share a little bit about some very important community service work in which they've been engaged over the last couple of weeks. So to start things off, I'm going to ask the students to introduce themselves. And then I believe Nana and Allison are going to be sharing a little update with us. Mark Paulson is also here. He's one of the assistant superintendent, or one of the assistant principals at Prior Lake High School. So first, girls, I'm going to hand this off. And maybe, why don't I just hold it? I'll hold it. I'll hold it. Then we'll be safe.
Okay, I'm Sophia Asin. I do the social media for BSU.
And you are going to be a?
We're, I'm going to be a senior.
Okay.
I'm Nana Sambrew. I'm the president of BSU, and I'll be a senior this year.
I'm Rosalyn Amunqua.
I'm the treasurer of BSU, and I'm going to be a senior.
I'm Alyssia Jacobs. I'm the secretary of BSU, and I'll be a senior.
I'm Allison Chetty. I'm going to be a senior, and I'm vice president of the BSU.
I handle the communication.
We are delighted to have you, and we're delighted to learn more from you right now. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Mark, who is then going to hand it over to Allison and to Nana.
Thank you, Dr. Stallow, board members, community. So I have the distinct pleasure of getting to introduce our leadership team here. The BSU, or Black Student Union, was formed in 2016. And the initial focus was, they've always been focused on creating a positive welcoming experience for our students, all of our students. Initially, when it first got off the ground, it really focused on creating a safe space where students of color could come together, share and talk about common experiences, challenges, celebrate successes, and that sort of thing. With this new leadership that has come in, they've expanded their focus to include education and advocacy, which I think is a really important next step, and I'm so proud of them for where they've taken it. So they are here tonight to share kind of what BSU is, the work that they've already accomplished, what their plans are, specifically, I think, around also engaging in partnership with the Prior Lake and Savage community to learn about and address issues of systemic racism and equity in partnership. So I just wanted to introduce them. They have the most important things to say. So, Nana, do you want to take over from here?
And, Nana, I'm going to ask you to go to the podium, just so we can hear you and see you from there, okay? Thank you.
Try and see if I can run this for you. So, Nana, there's just a mouse here that we've wiped off for you.
Okay.
And you can just scroll down, and your presentation will slide up. So just scroll that down.
Okay.
And I'll stay just.
Sounds good. Hi, everyone. I'm Nana Sambrew, president of the Black Student Union. And today, we are here to talk about what the Black Student Union is, what we do, also our very successful Juneteenth food drive that we had a couple of weeks ago, and future plans and events that we have for this group for the next couple of months.
So as you saw before, we introduced ourselves. I'm Allison Chetty. I am the vice president. For BSU, we just, our mission statement is that we pledge to dedicate time to a unified body that maintains responsibility and is committed to quality social development. And that just means for us that we want to educate students at the school about black issues and also include them, and also, like, include ourselves into the community better so that we can all work together just to be comfortable and just to, you know, be stronger as a community, Prior Lake Savage community, so.
And adding on to that, going back to being committed and having responsibility for ourselves, not just people in our group, but just everyone at our school, being committed and responsible to educating ourselves on issues that go around us in our community, in our schools, or even around the U.S. as well. And as group members, we hold ourselves to high standards as to making sure we can be the best versions of ourselves that we can be.
Okay, so on June 19, 2020, we had our Juneteenth food drive. We had that to help out with the Minneapolis community after what had happened down in Minneapolis. So we raised 6,819 pounds of food. It was a very successful food drive. We met so many cool people. We saw some of our old teachers that we miss so dearly. And this was just very important for us to have because it was on Juneteenth, which was when, like, the last of the slaves were, what's the word? Freed. Yes. And it was important for us to have it on that day, but it was also very important for us to have to, for Prior Lake and Savage to come together to raise food for another community in Minnesota. We're all tight-knit, and, you know, Minnesota nice, so we're out here donating food. And just to show that we do care about our black communities in Minneapolis-St. Paul and just our black community in general.
Yes, adding on to that as well, this was my personal experience. I was surprised with the amount of people that showed up, donated food, reshored our post online, donated money. It was just super heartwarming to see people who I didn't expect to see there just show up and support such a great cause. All right, future plans of the BSU. As you can see here, coming up soon, on July 24th, we'll be having a blackout cinema. So we're planning on having a movie being shown on the football field with up to 100 people, social distancing guidelines. But the movie we'll be showing is The Hate U Give. The Hate U Give is an amazing movie, especially for times during this with police brutality being the talk in the world right now. We're also planning on having a live conversation going on during the movie so people are able to ask questions, learn from other people. I'm a big believer in learning from your peers. So a way for people to come together, learn, ask questions in a judgment-free zone. Hopefully, in the near future, planning a cultural night to have people from the community and people from different backgrounds and countries come together, show their different music, foods, and dances from their different communities and backgrounds that they have. And also having some fundraising events in the future, like our food drive, or even fundraising for our group as a whole.
Something that we wanted to focus on this year was educating our peers, our teachers, and just the community in general. So we do plan on having more panel discussions where we have a topic and we talk about it, similar to caring conversations that we have at the high school. But we just want everyone to feel heard, and we want everyone to listen to one another, especially during times like this, during a pandemic, and also with racial tensions going on as well.
Yes, that's all we have.
Well, I want to thank you for being here. Thank you for elevating your voices. Thank you for 6,819 pounds. I believe, what I, what I believe I heard was that that was to the shelter that you took, the six trucks. That was the single largest donation they had ever received.
Yep.
So thank you, on behalf of our community, for helping us as a community do something to help others and for getting that going. And the outreach from our community was absolutely amazing. Your leadership, and we look forward to more from you in the days and weeks to come.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thanks very much. Oh, God. You're welcome.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll move on now to personnel items, the PLSEA grievance appeal. And I believe Jim has some words to say first.
Enrique is right there looking at me. Sorry, I take my glasses off. They fog up, and I can't see anything. Well, good evening, everybody. Lee had requested that I talk through some of the process related to this and how we got to where we are today related to this grievance. So I want to do that. So before I turn it over to her, just a few, a few notes. This was a language dispute that arose out of the action taken by the recommendation from administration and the action taken by the board around the school closure and the non-scheduling, or ULA, or whatever term you want to use. In this case, it was non-scheduling of work hours related to ECFE teachers. And ECFE teachers are in the teacher contract, but they have some language related to this grievance that is very specific only to them, okay? And it revolves around when classes are canceled that they cannot be reduced more than 20% compensation for their, for, let's see, I'll read it. "A teacher shall not see their compensation reduced by more than 20% as a result of cancellations." Excuse me. So from the district's perspective, as I, as I looked at all this information, the district's perspective is that that is based upon the yearly FTE. That's the guaranteed FTE for the year. Okay, so this is about a calculation, right? And the PLSEA's perspective is it's about no more than 20% of only the canceled classes. So that, there's a difference there, and that's the nature of where this all started. So related to process, in the PLSEA bargaining unit contract, the first place we take concerns related to the contract is lines of communication committee. And so we met, and we talked, and no resolution was had there. So you move on to the next step. And step one, once the grievance is filed, is to go to the building level. So since, in this case, we looked at all the factors, and we're not talking about the building principle per se, we just requested just go right to step two, which is myself. Okay, so, and they agreed with that. So we went to step two. We sat down and talked again. And again, my perspective was to look at all the information that I had, look at whatever emails or programmatic information. Excuse me. What's been done in the past, had some conversation with folks, and made a decision that based upon the evidence in front of me that I denied the grievance as well. I need some water. This mask on for two hours. Sorry about that. And so I did the same. I denied the grievance. And then, at that time, then, it comes before the board. That's the next step. And the contract language says that a subcommittee of the board of at least two members then would hear the grievance from the PLSEA. And then, at that point, I turned that over to Lee, and she took over from there. So I just wanted to give you that up to this point right now. Thank you very much. Lee, anything else you wanted me to?
Yes. Wanted to make sure you were done. So I believe everyone received the letter from the PLSEA that they had filed the grievance and explained the grievance in, as Jim explained, with the non-scheduling of work hours and the difference in opinion on how the compensation would happen for canceled classes. Shortly after receiving the letter, as I looked at the appointment of board members that would be dealing with this grievance, it comes to the executive board, group of the board, to hear the grievance. If you look at our committee structure. So that meant myself, Stacy, and Jonathan planned to meet with them. So what we did is we met both with the PLSEA and administration. Administration was Jim and Terry. And I think Becca was there for one of the meetings. We had two pretty lively meetings, listened to both sides of the documentation that they presented those days. And then they also went back and had more documentation that they sent to us by email, which we reviewed. Jonathan, Stacy, and myself had numerous meetings to discuss the evidence that was presented to us. And in the end, what we, what we decided or realized is that there was, the evidence was there to support the district's position, and there was no evidence to support the teacher's interpretation or the PLSEA's interpretation of the cancellations. So with that, with that decision made, we have a recommendation coming for, before the board tonight to deny the grievance. We followed the guidelines of the grievance procedure. And we have, feel that we have done our due diligence through our many discussions. We gave extra time to make sure that everybody had all of the information that they could possibly gather, most of it based on emails, some verbal communication. And that's why we're here tonight. So with that, I would like to take a motion to approve the recommendation of the board subcommittee to deny the PLSEA grievance.
So made.
Do I have a second?
Second.
By Jonathan? And then I'll open it up to the board for any discussion. Melissa?
Thanks, Lee. Okay, so first of all, Jim, you talked about process. What I didn't hear was some of the background as to what exactly occurred in the, in the process on April 6. These employees were notified after work hours and was effective immediately for the next day. Walk us through why that decision was made and what we've done in the past?
Well, the first thing I would say is we've done nothing like this in the past with the pandemic, right? So there, this, the one thing that we've been clear about is there has never been a time that I'm aware of that we've canceled classes in the middle of a class and canceled all of them. So related to that, there was no, we've never done it before. So this was, this was new. I'm sorry, this just doesn't work. And again, I think there's a lot of things here that we could discuss and talk about related to the process. But where we're at now is in relation to the specific grievance. There's a lot of things we have to talk about and discuss, especially as we move forward. There's still a lot of individual issues that we can look at and improve upon. But in this case, we're talking specifically about the grievance. So I'm not sure what your question is, but.
Well, it's my understanding that previously, when we had situations like this outside of COVID, that these folks were reassigned or shifted to other places to utilize their time.
Sure.
That's mainly the brunt, the crux of the, of the grievance in part, right?
I think it's a related discussion. I think what you're referring to is when this language went into, went into the contract in 2009, most of the time, these people, often, they were not reassigned. They just, they, they lost some of those hours. I think there was a shift when Becca took over to try to find more value-added work for them to do if a class was canceled. I don't think the process ever changed. I think the amount of reassignment increased. She's not here to talk to that, but as I understand it, that's, that's what happens. That when we talk about making them whole, she's trying to make up for the hours that they're missing. And it says in the contract that you may assign additional classes. It doesn't say you must. And I think she tried to help them be as whole as they could based upon the funding that she had. And that was possible most of the time.
Okay.
But I don't think, in, in the things that I reviewed and the three that looked at this stuff, I don't think I ever saw where we said we're changing the practice in, in, in practice or in policy to say that we are always going to. Because then I think you would have saw that in the contract. But right now, it's, it talks about 20% as the maximum based on cancellation of classes.
Okay. Well, speaking of the budget, so this was all because of, you say about COVID and the budget, that the classes were eliminated, correct?
Well, it was.
Budget issue, we didn't.
Well, yeah, I think the fund won. Did I get that right?
Four.
Four. Thank you. One's the general, right? I know that. Just to talk to that, and, you know, Terry was there too. We sat down and we talked about what, what we could do and what we couldn't do. And I think there was a consensus at the, the decision makers at the table that this was the right call right now based upon the fact that the fee-based classes were not gaining fees.
Okay.
Can I, can, yeah.
Well, what I'm, what I'm looking at is the budget. The community ed budget on April 20.
Let me explain something once here. The grievance has to do with them getting, how they get paid the extra 20%, or not extra, but the 20% when a class is canceled. The issue is the PLSEA feels that they should have been paid per class. And the district is saying their interpretation is that it was for the full, full yearly, full-time equivalent, the yearly equivalent. So that's the issue of the grievance right now. Any other discussion with what past practice has been or how things were handled are not part of this grievance. And as I said earlier, those, those items need to be dealt with at either the LOC, LOC, yeah, or in a memorandum in the contract or further discussion after this grievance. So I kind of want to stick to the, the, the subject of the actual grievance.
Okay, so the grievance, you said it was because of COVID. This is the first time we've done this. This is how it was handled. And we didn't have classes, so it was a budget issue, correct? I mean, when we look at the budget on April 20th, we showed in the community ed budget, we had $700,000. And then now we have minus $100,000. I mean, what happened to that money if, if we're not paying them?
And I can't, I can't answer to that. I'm, I, I don't have the answer to that. I'm.
Again, that's not the grievance.
Right. I think that's a.
My point is there seems to be a lot of information that a minority number of the board members have, have, have seen. I haven't seen everything.
Right.
But that's the process.
That's the process that we have to go through.
Again, I haven't seen everything.
But the, the board has, the three.
No, three people to the board have.
And that, and the process that's laid out is that they represent the board and bring a recommendation to the board.
I understand the process, but I'm just saying that there are four members of the board. They haven't seen everything, so that's all I have.
Okay. Any other questions? Mary?
I do. We were talking about 13 teachers, right?
Correct.
From the total amount. Was any effort made when the mass layoff occurred to single out those 13 teachers to understand that they were subject to this particular language? And talk to them or try to work out something before this happened or before they were told?
I think there was a discussion about some, trying to get some online learning going the week prior. But once the decision was made, I don't believe there was discussion about what could be done differently.
Okay, so basically, there was, there was no discussion with the coordinator to see if those particular 13 that were, that were kind of a carve-out from the community ed group because they were, they were the only 13, as I understand it, that were subject to these particular, this particular contract language.
They're the only ones that, yes, that's correct. They're the only ones with this contract.
Teachers that are in the teacher's contract.
Right, that's what I meant.
Yep.
But when, when.
That's correct.
Handle the community ed, when we kind of abruptly sent them a message after 5:00 PM, after one full day work, I believe, on April 3, April 6, there wasn't an effort to say, okay, these 13 teachers were then a carve-out or a separate group within that larger group that, that were subject to different requirements within the contract. There wasn't that thought ahead before they were, before they were, their classes were canceled and they were terminated. That's what I'm getting at. I'm wondering if there was anything done in the conversations with the, what is it, the PLSEA? Is it, it was what you consider a bargaining unit, I think, is what it's called, or, or the group itself, to actually understand how they were subject to this contract, whereas the rest of them were not.
Those 13 were our teachers, so they are under the teacher's bargaining unit contract. That's why we're talking about 13. The other community ed employees are not part of that contract.
Right.
Were they treated differently when the email went out on Monday night because they were part of a different bargaining unit? And therefore, their terms of employment were different than the, than the, than the general populace that were also laid off with them?
My understanding is that community ed is fee-based. And it was getting to the point where we couldn't afford to keep paying people without any kind of income coming in and fee-based. So it was coming out of our general fund.
Okay, well, that, you're going off topic, obviously.
Well, you're off topic right now because we're talking about a grievance. We're not talking about how they were laid off or who was laid off. This is about how they get compensated.
Well, their contract states how they're going to get compensated. And from my understanding is they're the only 13 of everyone that was laid off that would have been subject to this particular contract.
That's because they're part of the teacher's contract.
Yep, that's a fact.
So, so when the mass layoff occurred, was that taken into consideration? I'm not talking about whether we had funding or anything like that. I'm just saying that, you know, because they were subject to a separate contract versus a lot, most of the others, I think all of the others were part of an hourly rate that were not based on this contract or any other contract. Therefore, were they treated differently, or was that even a consideration before they were laid off? I don't know.
I'm not sure what you mean by treated differently. They're treated under the contract that.
They're treated under the contract that they work under. And the, and they're different. They work under different scenarios. One has, is under a teacher's contract, the other is not.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Was that considered before the layoff notice occurred? Were they given a separate message? Were they given a separate email than everybody else to?
I guess I can't answer that. I don't know that.
Well, I can talk to that. It wasn't, there were like four different groups involved in this, right? So you had some people that are part of the MSA bargaining unit. You had some folks that are terms and conditions of community ed. You had some that were the secretarial bargaining unit. And you had some in the teacher bargaining unit. And we looked at all of those individually. Now, if they, they probably got very similar, and I can't even remember now. If it's exactly the same, but that was all generated based upon, from HR, based upon a spreadsheet and the bargaining unit they were in. And did a, I can't remember the name of the term right now, but it's kind of like mail merge, right? But in Google. And, and in order that we didn't miss anybody and we had all names accounted for and everything was right, it was generated out of there. So everybody, once we, we sort of did all the communication and we said, okay, it's time to go, then my office generated those letters electronically so that they went out. But yes, we looked at all four bargaining, excuse me, bargaining units or groups of people differently to make sure that we took into account all their contract language. Sorry, I can't see people, I'm blind as a bat, so if I'm looking.
Any other questions or comments? Michael?
If I'm understanding correctly, too, the way this language is interpreted will also be a precedent center going forward in terms of how we might consider, how you would consider scheduling classes for early childhood. For example, if, if, depending which way you interpret that language, it's going to kind of constrain how much they're willing to schedule if they're still going to have to pay 80% of that salary if a class doesn't fill. So that, looking backwards, we also have to look forward to how, how that wording works. Am I interpreting that correctly? But that would have an impact if we looked at it per class instead of per full, full year on what we're able to offer. We'd have to be more conservative, is that correct? Do you know what I'm saying?
A question with regards to that, if I may.
Okay.
How did other school districts handle this? This is fairly common language from what I understand.
Actually, it's not, it's not as common as you might think. There's some comparisons of other districts and some of them have no compensation when a class is canceled. So it, it really varies. It's, it's not real consistent on that. If you're talking about what we should be talking about with the grievance, and that is how they handled layoffs with early childhood, I'm not that familiar with. But there is contract language in a number of districts that say, if class is canceled, that's it. There's no other compensation. So we're offering, we're settled or whatever the word is, I'm losing, I don't know what word I want here, but they get 80% of that class, of that yearly total in the class cancellations.
Yeah, this doesn't say anything with regards to per class either. I don't think that's a, I don't think that was part of the language dispute. But yeah, there, there are other school districts. And, and I don't think this just applies to early childhood because this is just the teacher subject to this particular contract that we're in early childhood, right?
It's only the early childhood teachers.
Yes.
No, but I meant this, this particular grievance only has to do with early childhood. Pursuant to what Michael said, this could set a precedent for any teacher part of this particular overriding teacher contract. This wasn't one.
Which I don't believe that's what.
No, I was talking about early childhood scheduling and offerings.
So this was the general teacher contract, I'm sure.
Yep.
Yes, it is. It's a part of the contract, the teacher's contract. And early childhood, a number of years ago, became part of the teacher's contract. They have a section, whatever one it is here, Article 10, that deals with early childhood teachers. Specifically, early childhood teachers. It does not deal with other teachers in the district.
This is language that does apply to the overall teacher contract, right?
No, it does not. It applies to the early childhood teachers.
The article is just for early childhood.
I just, I read over the whole contract multiple times and I, I just remember language like this in other areas. And I understand the, the community ed, the funds and all this kind of stuff. But again, whether the classes were funded or not is not a consideration within this. It is, it is the, basically the 80/20 that they have to be. And a teacher should not see their compensation reduced by more than 20% as a result of cancellations.
And that's for early childhood teachers?
And this is an unprecedented time. And they're, they don't seem to be carved out, again, to have any conversation with them to let them understand the situation so that work assignments, if any existed or not, or any communication with the community or anything else, whether there would have been funding. So it's, again, without, you know, and per what Melissa said, without seeing the, the evidence that was presented and not really understanding how the evidence would apply anyways, just because this is an unprecedented event. The language in the contract seems pretty clear. There isn't a lot of wiggle room here.
Mary, it's, what seemed, what portion of the language in the contract are you saying seems clear? And, and, and what is your, what are you reading?
When a cla, I'm reading the contract. When class cancellations make it impossible for a teacher to work, they allow it contracted time. The coordinator may assign additional classes and work assignments after consultation with the teacher. If the consultation didn't occur and then, which it didn't seem like it did, a teacher shall not see their compensation reduced by more than 20% as a result of class, of, 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 results of cancellations. That's it. A teacher shall not see their compensation reduced. So when I see that, there's two words. There's after consultation with the teacher. And then the teacher shall not see their compensation reduced by more than 20% as a result of cancellations. That seems pretty direct. And so my first question was, was did the consultation or did those 13 teachers that were subject to this provision get carved out for that consultation? Was there any evidence to show that that actually happened? Because I didn't get a chance to see the evidence. And then it doesn't say percentage of classes. It just say compensation reduced by more than 20%. So if their net was reduced by more than 20% for their allocated contract time, that's the number that I don't even have in front of me. I mean, I haven't been given anything other than the, the grievance and the fact that, and the fact that the executive committee said that it didn't back it up. But did the consultation with the teacher happen before it was?
Again, that's not part of the grievance. The grievance is how they're, they're compensated due to class cancellation. And I'm, I'm gonna, Enrique is waving like crazy here, so I want to get his, um, his comment.
No, I actually just wanted to add on that and say that there's one additional word in there that is overlooked, and that's the word "may." That's permissive. It's not required. It's not mandatory. It's optional. So the coordinator may do this, but they're not required to do this before moving forward with cancellation. I think that's one of the sticking points that is creating some additional consternation.
Yep.
And Mary, I would just say that I think you hit the last part right on the head when you talked about the 20% number. Because that's the nature, that is the specific nature of the grievance. And that is, is it 20% of their total FTE for the year? Or is it 20% of only the classes that are canceled?
That's the interpretation difference right there.
Right. And that's the, that's the, that's the language dispute right there. That's it.
And I'm stuck on that too. I, I, but again, I, I, you know, it's a, it's, um, yeah.
And I, I do understand, I mean, through the whole process, we had concerns the whole time of being able to talk to the rest of the board and having them kept updated, just within, we, you know, asking the questions to the district attorney, you know, we would be in, in meeting violation, open meeting law violation if we would have done that. So, you know, we kept trying to figure out a way to do that. There wasn't a way to do that. There wasn't a way to have a closed session. We asked that question. So I, I do feel the pain of the other board members because I, I understand what, what you're saying, but we also tried. And without breaking rules and breaking laws, we couldn't do that. So I think the, the main part of the conversation of what we had with trying to get information from both parties was showing us some type of evidence of how you're, of how the FTE was calculated. And anything that we saw as in form of emails or calculations was always yearly. That was always a yearly calculation. So, and anything we asked in the contract itself, was there any point in, in the teacher contract as a whole where we ever talked about compensation not being yearly? And that was never, it was always yearly compensation. So from what we could tell and what we gathered as evidence, everything we saw was yearly. The interpretation was yearly. But it's basically, I mean, we, we tried. I mean, I do, I do, I do feel for the other board members, but there was nothing we could do.
Well, I think we all agree with that. It's frustrating, but we had to follow a process. And that's the process that we were given. Melissa? From what I understand, there seems to be a question about some documents. And the PLSEA leadership team cites that there, that Jim had indicated there are multiple times when the district had reduced yearly salary, salary by 20%, but when asked to provide the payroll, he could not. So can you tell us more about that?
Well, I don't think, yeah, it's not that I couldn't. I was continuing to review documentation and having discussions with folks. But this is a language dispute. And in a language dispute, I mean, I, I began to gather evidence and I continued. There were thousands of emails that I went through. But in a language dispute, the burden of proof is on the grievant. And I was waiting for some proof.
They didn't produce it.
It, it, up to my point.
Up until the.
Up to my, yeah, and then, you know, there was, yep.
Kind of did.
Yep.
I do take issue with one thing because I did ask for an update during the data retreat and was, there wasn't one to give, and that was before the last meeting. So I, I wish we could have gotten an update or at least.
Couldn't talk about it.
You, you weren't allowed to talk about it with anybody else?
Yeah.
No, that would have been more than, no, we couldn't have done that.
We were at the data retreat. We were there all together. But.
We were in the middle of an ongoing discussion with the.
In the middle of it. I mean, you know.
Well, I, I gotta admit that the, without seeing the payroll numbers and, and all that kind of stuff, this language is pretty stark and we don't have a precedent at event. So I'm, it's, it's, and again, not seeing any of the evidence. And, and, and I do understand that the, that the notice came out fairly rapid. And, you know, did not go over very well, obviously, with also parents and everything else. I just, I'm, I, I actually have some doubts as to whether it was actually thought about that these 13 teachers would have been, or should have been treated differently or should have been considered differently. And if any calculation had been, had occurred ahead of time to make sure that, whether it was annual or per class, and there's nothing really here that says either way, but that, that they, that you weren't dropping below that 80%. So I, and that's, that's, I, you know, however it happened or whatever happened or whatever, it's, it's done and passed. But that's one of the, the biggest concerns that I have here is, is, uh, is, you know, is this, is this kind of an afterthought? And, and, you know, and maybe we should look at this a little bit more. I don't know what the, what the rules are. I think Lee said that you have to vote on it now that the executive committee came to it. But I'm not convinced of, I'm not convinced of either side right now. And I, and I, and I understand that we could be going into some very tumultuous times coming up where we could see this again. And if the language is still out there, you know, is there a way to come to a better resolution rather than just denying the grievance outright?
Well, I would hope that there will be a better resolution when they come into negotiations to clarify that language going forward. And, and know that the teachers received their 80%. I don't think any teacher went below the 80%. I mean, you, I wasn't sure what you meant by that, but they never, their grievance isn't that they got less than 80%. They got their 80%. It's how the compensation was based on for the canceled classes and their full-time equivalent with the 20%.
And that's confusing to me too. How they got their 80% with, yes, classes being canceled and them being immediately laid off as of April 6th. You know, the, the, what was the 80% based upon? What was the payroll based upon, et cetera? I haven't seen any of those numbers. And, and I, and we're not hearing from their side here either. And so that's, I mean, we're, everything here is one-sided. That's another thing. I mean, I don't know if I'm even getting the full picture. It's, it's, it's really confusing in the, in the emergency. The emergency need for an all of a sudden vote is also very confusing with so little time to kind of discuss this.
That's also no part of the process. We are required to bring it to the next board meeting. It's not us saying that.
We're just happy that the next board meeting was until the 13th, which gave us more time.
Right. I mean.
We got the email on Friday afternoon, Friday evening.
And that was after we heard, we waited to get as much information as we possibly could from the administration and from the teachers before PLSEA, before we made any decision. And I apologize that it was Friday, but that was how much time it took to get all the information that they needed and to get back to us. I had asked for it the week before and they felt that they would not be able to do that, the PLSEA, because they weren't, hadn't, they hadn't received all the information or had they had a chance to go through all of it.
What do you mean they hadn't received it?
They had asked for some information, I think, for some emails and things.
Yep.
They did a data request. And so we got them the information, the district, no, well, we, whatever, got them the information back from the data request. And how much time did it take between the data requests from them and the decision by the executive committee?
Wait, say that again.
So they were waiting on a data request?
Yes.
Okay. And when did that come in?
I don't know. When did it come in?
When did the teachers?
When did they receive?
Yeah, I, I don't think so. I don't know.
Monday, Monday.
I think is when we were done with it, they might have picked it up on Tuesday.
Okay, Tuesday or Wednesday, actually. I think you told them on Tuesday that it was available.
Okay. Yep, that's probably right. That, there was information that we shared with them.
Before that.
Weeks prior. It's just that part of that data request was all information from 2009 to 2020. Right? And so I think the first flush of emails that Rush did for me was like 30,000 emails that had the query names in, so.
Based upon the search criteria.
Yep, yep.
And, and you're right. There, we did get information before, that we had two meetings before that with both groups. So, I mean, we did have some information. We were waiting for the very last whatever they had.
Is the process normally that the opposing group does not present here also? We only hear from one side?
Well, I, I asked, either group is presenting. I asked Jim to present the process leading up to this so that we'd all have a better understanding of what the district did. This isn't really a presentation by the district. He's helping fill in some holes for things that you guys are asking about. But.
We haven't.
It's about the board. We were in the middle. Basically, the board's in the middle now. It's like this side and this side, and we're in the middle listening. So.
Jim's not presenting his evidence.
No.
Tonight. Jim's not making his case.
I'm trying to provide context of what happened and then related to the contract where according to the, their, the PLSEA contract, the board is a representative group of at least two that hears the grievance. Once they hear the grievance and then they come back to the next board meeting, this meeting, and provide their findings and recommendations. So that's my responsibility as a HR person. Make sure that process is followed.
Jonathan?
Lee, I, I, if, if everybody humor me a little bit, this might, this might get a little long, but I just, I kind of want to review how this process worked from my perspective. At the front end of this, I, like all of us, I think, had a lot of empathy for everybody, not just these 13 teachers, but everybody that the district had to, had to lay off or whatever it was, non-scheduled work hours, whatever. It was a difficult situation. As a human being, you know, my first inclination is to support people when they have a concern, something like this. I tried to approach this as a board member and say, what's my job? And, and so step one for me was define the issue. And defining the issue of the grievance was about the definition. And defining the issue of the grievance was about the definition of the word compensation in the contract. And ultimately, it is the, the union, the bargaining unit's definition is they would, their understanding is that in the statement, "A teacher shall not see compensation reduced by more than 20% as a result of cancellations." They would say that means from the day the cancellations happen going forward, which would have meant we would have continued to pay those folks 80% of their compensation through the balance of the year. That is their position. I don't think that's been clearly stated out here tonight. The district's position is that in the contract, throughout the contract, and whenever compensation is discussed, compensation is being talked about as an annual figure. And so when the statement is made, "Shall not see a reduction of more than 20%," "Shall not see compensation reduced by more than 20% as a result of cancellation." The district's position is that it is not more than 20% of your annual compensation, which some of those folks had been pretty close to reaching, which is why they didn't get paid a whole lot for the balance of the year. So step one for me was define the issue. And the definite, for me, the issue was compensation. How do we define it? The second one was what's my role? Okay, what was our role, the three of us? And we were essentially jurors. I mean, we were hearing both sides and needed to come to a conclusion as to what was correct. And it's important, it's, Jim mentioned this once. It is important to understand in a labor grievance like this, it is a language interpretation question. And in that situation, and the, the union, the PLSEA folks agreed with this, that the burden of proof does fall on the grievance. So they needed, I, I very clearly said to them in one of our meetings, "All I need to find in your favor is I need somewhere that you can show me that compensation means something other than annual." If, if there had been an email, if there had been a document in which compensation was referred to any other way, they would have had a chance for me to, to find in their favor. So from a process standpoint, we've heard about that. We had several meetings, we've reviewed lots of documents. To me, the basis of this decision is, did the union meet the burden of proof? And for me, the burden of proof wasn't really high. I wasn't looking for, you know, a criminal beyond a reasonable doubt. I wasn't even looking really for a civil preponderance of the evidence. I was looking for, can you show me an example where that's how compensation was employed? And I didn't see it. I did, on the other hand, I did see examples produced from the district of situations where there was a teacher, one of those teachers, I think it was in 2016, I might be wrong about that, that we saw that there were class cancellations and there was a very specific note that at this time, there wasn't other work to be assigned. It had been past practice that we would try to keep them. I would say as a courtesy, that's the reason the word "may" is in there. And I think Becca did an amazing job of keeping those folks busy and giving them work and, and helping them to get their hours if class, classes got canceled. This was just different. And so my conclusion was just very simply, I have great empathy for the situation and it was difficult and it was messy and it wasn't perfect. But for me, this grievance as a board member, detaching the emotion from a rational argument, did we, do I see evidence that supports the contract requires us to pay them for the balance of the year? And I don't. And quite frankly, I want to see it. Because as a human, as a, as a person, I wish we could, I, I'd like to. My job as a board member is to be detached and ra, and, and look at this fact-based. And so that's what I see. And I think that's, um, what all three of us saw. It was a hard position to be in.
Jonathan, first of all, anytime you have an grievance or an appeal, the burden of proof is always on the plaintiff. That's, that's, that's common sense, whether it's an insurance grievance or a, or a, uh, an employment grievance. So that's, that's fine. It doesn't need to be, uh, detailed there. That's normal. However, the con, the, the, it does say the coordinator may assign additional classes, "may." But what doesn't say "may" is "after consultation with the teacher." Nobody denies this was a, whatever. But if you look at the actual words and what you actually said in your defense of, of, of the, of the evidence that you saw, is there was a conversation or a consultation with the teacher or teachers involved. And again, I haven't seen the compensation, I haven't seen any of the numbers, I don't know what that is. But if, if I'm sitting here, if, if this goes to, quite frankly, if it goes to the next step, that after consultation with the teachers can hold a lot of water. And that's what I'm trying to get at, is was there a conversation? And, and if any of the evidence that was produced didn't include a member of PLSEA when they were talking about the definition, then usually that type of evidence would not be included because that would not include all parties. So you can't, I can't have a conversation with you about this, about a, for instance, about the definition of this, but not include the teacher, not include a member of the bargaining unit in order to have that definition hold water as, as far as being a precedent to definition. So my concern is after consultation with the teacher, which is why I'm wondering what type of conversations occurred with these 13 teachers prior to that email that went out on April 6th? Because that doesn't have "may" before it. The coordinator "may" assign after consultation with the teacher.
Mary, that's, I, I understand what you're saying. And I, that probably needs to be worked out, most likely needs to be worked out to make sure that that happens. If, if it did happen, great. If it didn't, we need to make sure it happens because it's stated that way. That's not what this grievance is about. That would be a different grievance.
At no point.
This grievance is about how we interpret the language on the 80/20.
At, at no point.
But it qualifies the definition here of when that actually comes into play also, which is why the whole paragraph is included.
No, it doesn't.
Mary, if I, if I could respond. Two meetings, four and five, I think, members of the bargaining unit present over the course of, I don't know, a total of about three hours.
Each.
And a lot of emails. And I don't believe, unless I missed it, I don't believe they ever brought up a concern about a consultation.
They never brought up a concern about automatic calculation and funds being available, not being available.
They talked about funds being available or not being available. Yes, that was discussed.
Right.
But I don't, I don't recall.
Never talked about alternatives to the automatic layoff? That being considered as part of the consultation?
There was, as, as, if I looked at, if I look at contractual language and I think about the, the grievance itself and the conversations with the teachers, at no point did I feel anybody expressed that part of their grievance was a lack of a consultation. I, did, did anybody?
No, no. But what I, what I would say is that they had concerns that did not involve the grievance. And those concerns need to be addressed, but not with this grievance.
The grievance is specifically about paying people.
And how they get paid.
So I agree. Again, it was a difficult circumstance and it, um, things had to happen, boom, boom, boom. And were they perfect? Probably not. I, again, for me, I wanted to find.
It's not a matter of want. It's a matter of what we're setting ourselves up for, next steps. It's also a matter of creating some sort of a, of a, um, of a, uh, uh, settlement or something to come to an amicable solution.
Agreed.
Rather than an all-out denial, because there's, I, I can't see where any party is 100% right or wrong on this. That's the problem. And without that consultation or at least advisory or something in there, which is normally, um, done, then this is not a cut and dried, just boom, deny it. And that's, and I haven't seen any other alternatives presented either in this.
Mary? Neither have we. All of, each of us said, "I wish we had a third door." We don't, at this point, we have to make a decision on the grievance. After that, there can be discussion. There can be discussion about the issues that were part of the grievance and try to reach some sort of an agreement. But door number three isn't, isn't available to us. Unfortunately.
What you're referring to can be addressed.
This isn't a negotiation.
Separate from this grievance. It's not part of the grievance. And, and I believe it will be. And as I said, it can be through the lines of communication. There can be a memorandum, that's all more negotiation-type things. We are not the negotiators here. We're, our task was to determine the grievance on the, on how they were compensated.
No, and I, and I get that. But we are the board and, and there was communications. And I'm still, I'm still stuck on the exact language. Because if, if this, if I'm sitting here as a totally unbiased person, I look at the exact language, I'm going to just ask for the compensation dollars and proof of consultation based upon the exact language in Article 10, Section 3, Sub, uh, subsection 6. That's what I'm going to look at. And that's where I am totally at a loss with, with, with the data and with the proof. And, and I have sat through grievance and arbitrations and all that kind of stuff in a legal setting with the judge. Thankfully, not with me on one party, but me as an expert coming in with the data. So that's where I look at this. It's very, to me, it's very fact-based and, and that's where I'm struggling here. Also, quite frankly, the entire contract and the language that I read is, um, it's not what I'm typical, it's not what I'm used to seeing of an attorney-created contract either. It's, it's kind of all over the board. So, um, a little bit more difficult to, to get into this. But, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm still on the fence. Especially not seeing the, the evidence, I, I'm still on the fence.
Well, due to the process.
I get it.
I guess we're asking with the constraints we have, that you would trust the board members that were assigned to do this.
Ask.
Ask. And I don't know if anyone else has any other comments. I believe that, um, the other issues, the way things were handled or whatever, if we have to do something in the future, that that will be discussed between the administration and the PLSEA and have that resolution of those things. But tonight, it's about a grievance on how, um, the ECFE teachers are compensated due to the class cancellations. And as Jonathan said, we saw support for the annual compensation. We did not see support for the, per-class con, um, compensation. So, um, does anyone have any other last comments?
I would just reiterate what you said, and that is, you had a very specific grievance in front of you. That's what you, we asked you to spend the time researching. And although, like, I'm on the Early Childhood Committee, I work with Becca. I know those teachers, I go to their family nights. I feel for them. And there's a lot we have to address. But we asked, you were serving the role of the representatives of the board to look at one specific question. It wasn't you against the teachers, you were the jurors. You weighed the evidence and you didn't get the evidence you needed for the grievance to make the case. Yes, we need to look at wording, what, you know, what does it mean to have a discussion or, or whatever with those people in the contract? I think Becca goes to extraordinary lengths to put people into positions in normal circumstances and put them to work and find creative ways for them to be involved in curriculum or scheduling or planning out when there's a, you know, bad opportunity. But everything stopped. And the main question is, do they get paid 80% of their yearly salary or 80% of every class, even if it's canceled? Is that correct? Like, do we look at compensation as a year or as a class period?
They will get their 80%.
They will get their 80% of the year. So we don't even, yep.
Yeah, they did, I'm sorry. Not will.
So I honor the emotion and the, the extra issues we have to talk about and the personal connection to these teachers and relationships matter. And I feel like you did the job we asked you to do by your role. To do all, spend all of those hours listening and researching and legally do it so you could report back to us and make a recommendation. Now it's up to us to vote.
I have a motion and a second. Pardon? I don't know if this has to be roll call. We can do roll call. It doesn't matter? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
That motion carries.
What was?
I think you said aye. Did you say aye, Enrique?
Enrique, what'd you say?
Aye.
That motion carries 5-2. Thank you. We have no unfinished business this evening, so we'll move into new business with the construction update.
Good evening, Dr. Stallow and Chair Shimick, members of the board. Going to do a facilities construction update. Well, we presented this at our, uh, Facilities Committee, um, a couple of weeks ago. Things change at a rapid pace, especially at the stage that our construction projects are at right now. So this material is a little dated. I'll just verbally update, um, this presentation. So we'll, um, start with five hawks, which is a, at the tail end of its updates, which is a set of lower-level windows, which will bring, um, direct lighting into our lower-level kindergarten classrooms. Those were remodeled, um, a couple of years ago. It's the beginning of our project, our bond projects. And these windows have now been installed. The photos only show the openings and the, and the re-bricking of the opening zones. They were cut and, uh, waiting for the windows, this last photo, but they are currently installed. We had to move the lockers in the lower level to install them. Those are being reinstalled and then the area will be cleaned and ready to roll. It's amazing how much more light it brings into that lower level. It's a great addition to this space. Moving on to Oladilago at Greenwood, um, photos of the demolition. I know we did a board tour, some of you got to see this firsthand. It is really amazing to see the insides of these spaces, just, um, concrete floors completely dug up and new, um, mechanical roughens in, in the kitchen and the restroom areas, um, in the ceilings. Also really amazing to see, um, the beams, the wood ceilings and the wood posts and beams that support this structure, just so aptly named Greenwood. And very fun to find some old relics in there as well. So this photo in particular, I love of the chimney, um, which is such a landmark from many, many years. Coming down, I was, took some photos before and after. It's, it's quite a drastic change to the site, but it was an amazing process to watch it come down. In this photo you're looking at right now, you can see the dumpster in this photo is now, um, a new wall of the new addition. So this area has been, uh, completely changed from this photo. It's just a picture of some of the protection of the roof as the chimney came down. These photos show you the removal of our last steam boiler in the district so that, uh, we are all hot water, um, systems, which is just a great update. But kind of sad to see those old beautiful pieces of equipment, um, gone. Demolition of the space is shown right here for our new addition, which is going to be that, a new serving area and expansion of the cafeteria and kitchen. Moving on to, to pulling out the old fuel tank. So that fuel tank was sitting right in the space where the new addition is going with the changeover to our new boilers. And, um, we are, are no longer doing dual fuel there. That was, uh, Center Point granted us permission to go to a single-fuel source, which is just, um, firm gas. And so we are no longer doing both fuel, oil and gas, but only gas at this site. So we pulled the fuel tank and are able to use that space for our addition. Here's a show, a photo that shows some of those beams, um, and, uh, in that space. Just amazing. It was. It was, and it's really changed drastically since then. Part of the, the projects that this shows are the old lockers. So the original lockers that were in these spaces were the, because it was a high school, were very tall and very narrow and not appropriate for grade school. So what we're doing in conjunction with a locker project at the high, high school is pulling out some of the lockers at the high school, repurposing them here at Greenwood. So the picture on the right shows the lockers were pulling from the high school. And the picture on the left shows the space where we pulled those old lockers out. And the next picture shows you one of the little treasures we found in the mall, which is a, a ticket to the Prior Lake Junior High High School Band and Chorus Concert on Thursday, May 8th, 1975. Tickets a dollar. So this was very fun to find in there. So this is the walls of that addition going on, going up for the serving area and cafeteria. And then we're onto Hamilton Ridge, which is just flying along. We, the photos that were at the beginning of this slideshow that you saw were some of the tours that we did with the staff. It was the last day, I believe it was June 3rd, that staff were on site. And so all the staff members came through in groups of 10 and toured their new building, which was very fun to do. It was five hours of tours with, so total in group, but it was very fun to go through. Particularly fun was our Kids Company Coordinator at that site showing, being very excited about her new office space and her storage space. And Vicky Sanchez, who is the new lead custodian at that site, just very excited about the new building. So those were two highlights for me on that tour. As you can see, the pictures of the exterior, just beautiful brickwork. The, the site is, is, work has come a long way since these photos. The front of the building is now done. So the, if you drive up, you can see the, the parent drop off loop and the front entrance. All of that is gray, is too gray. All of the blacktop is in. So it's really looking ready to go. Coming right along. That's the last photo here is of the road 157th, is that, yes. 156th Street, excuse me, on the bat, on the north side of the building. So that was part of the project that the school had to do. And as I like to say, we had to build it. We, we don't have to plow it. So this will be for the city to plow. Prior Lake High School, Field House Kitchen Commons and Tower D. So this is the, the last phases of the project. This first picture is of the field house, which is just, just a beautiful space. It's going to be such a great facility. It is done. And you can see there's some things staged in it in this photo, but we are, are ready to roll that facility with a couple of mechanical pieces to wrap up in some of the lower level areas. But the equipment is installed, the floor is done. And now it's just a really amazing space. These are some photos of the restroom, the weight room. We are, our students are just so lucky to have this facility to use. The next photo shows the backside of the building, back of house. The, you can see in this photo where the generator was moved to, which is right by the boiler room and the new receiving area that is being built. So this is one of the last phases of the, we have, you can see the tower in the background. That is the very last phase to be, for completion. And I believe that is November. I haven't checked that date for sure, but the, the receiving area is September. So we are moving along with that area. Just an interesting detail, from looking on the roof down to some of the deck, you can see the new building being tied into the old building here. The, the amount of coordination and oversight that the HNU contractors has had on this project is just really pretty stunning when you look at what they've had to do. They're adding 143,000 some square feet in all, on all, the whole perimeter of the building. It's an amazing feat and I, they should be really proud of their job they're doing. And we're very lucky to have them as a contractor on this project. They're doing a great job. This is the picture of the front of the, the new serving area. It looks very different from now. But one of the really interesting things to me in this photo is if you take a look at that horizontal beam, you can just see the size of it to support that cast ceiling above it, above that whole serving areas. It was quite an engineering feat to get it in there. And the next photo shows the kitchen, which is the floor completely dug up. And the following photo shows all of the mechanical roughens installed in the kitchen. That floor was poured this week. So we, our kitchen is, is well on the way. So that's, this is a really big milestone for us in this space. Next photo are both from looking, if you're standing in front of the kitchen, looking to your left, you will see the wall where the, that wall will eventually be opened up into the new common space. And looking to the right, you can look into the existing common space where you see the learning stairs and with the, just the, the corner of the new serving area right there. Little close-up of the learning stairs. Those are being finished. They're doing one more grinding on that before they install the surfaces, on the finished surfaces on those. The site work is getting done. I just love this photo with the new sod being laid on the bus loop, new sidewalks in. Just, you know, it's really coming together, finished look there. Moving to Twin Oaks, upper level classroom addition. Just a really old photo on the right where you can see with that, the existing building, the tie-in of the beams, tying the new blockwork to the existing roof and then the, the new roof decking on. Again, a complex project with some real significant challenges. But just kind of those detailed photos showing you some of the challenges that are involved in tying those old buildings to the new floor being poured in there. Again, this space looks very different. All the windows are in, the brickwork is done. You know, finishes are going in. And again, I think we toured many of these spaces. Beautiful brickwork on this building. It's just a really stunning addition. Some details of the brickwork on there. That was a quick tour, but questions, yes. And it's changed a lot from these photos as it does every day at this stage with these projects. So any questions about that?
Not a question, but we were lucky enough to get a tour of most of what you showed us. And it's changed a lot, I'm sure. So it was, it was exciting to see and almost overwhelming. It was, it was so cool how much has been done or, or some of the changes, especially.
There's a lot going on.
Yeah.
I think that's one of the things is the number of approvals. You are at every single.
Yeah, hundreds of some at Hamilton, hundreds of some at the high school. Yeah. A lot. All right. Good. Thank you very much. Yep. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to long-term facility maintenance approval.
Good evening, Chair Shimick, Dr. Stallow, members of the board. Can I get it? So tonight I am looking for approval for the 10-year updated LTFM plan. This is our annual update that requires board approval. I went over some of the major changes with the FLIRP committee. We are under construction. We always planned on leveraging LTFM for some of the construction projects. And Julie, the dollars work out, right? There are some changes to the plan, but it fits within our budget.
Does anybody have any questions? Stacy?
I just see some over budgeting on the first, what, 21, 22 and 23. On page four.
Is that the, the financial sheet on there?
Yeah.
Yep. So Julie, can you help explain that?
So this is a very, good evening again. This is a very fluid document. As we've been working through our construction process, this, sometimes things are, we are not able to do them in the, in the time that we think that we are able to. And this is what's happened. And so we have some carryover. And as you are probably well aware, when you look at our budget, we have long-term facility maintenance. We have a fund balance in there. And so what we're doing is we're reallocating that fund balance to be spent in that year. So we'll be spending some of those monies down in our fund balance for long, for, simply for long-term facility maintenance. So we are looking, it does look as if we're overspending, but it's just because some of those projects have been delayed. We need to show them on this report this way.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, before Julie goes away, what did you mean, could you just elaborate on your comment of, because some of these projects were delayed? Just so I understand how to put that in context.
Well, when we, we don't exactly know when they fit perfectly into our construction. So that's kind of what happens.
Okay. I, I didn't know if you meant they were delayed already from, okay, good. Any other questions? Hey, this did come before a FLIRP. Do I have a motion to approve the long-term facility maintenance schedule?
No, ma'am.
Jonathan, second. Second by Mary. Any comments or questions? Hey, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have childhood, our child nutrition update and overview with Emily Malone.
Dr. Stallow, Board Shimick, Board Chair Shimick and Board members, how are you? So I wanted to start my presentation with a really incredible number. We served 370,702 meals during the COVID shutdown. We had to reinvent the way that we do that. And I just wanted to, in this board presentation, kind of explain how we did that. Because it was a pretty incredible feat and I am extremely proud of my team and the operations team and teachers and kids co. Relationships really do matter and that's how we got this done. The next two slides are just pictures of the way that we reinvented school food service for this period of time. We had assembly lines basically at our schools and had to come up with a bunch of tables and do social distancing and wear masks. And it was just, it was an incredibly big challenge, but all of our teams came together and overcame it. And that, it was just really neat. This picture on the top left is how we did senior refunds. These are just a couple of the lunchrooms where we're doing our assembly lines. Again, more assembly line pictures. The bottom left there is bus pickup. The top left there is, we put food safety sheets in every single one of our meal packages along with reheating instructions because we figured that students may be reheating meals at home alone maybe. So wanted to make sure that they were eating good hot food. The way that I wanted to explain it is basically in a timeline. Because really everything changed hour by hour at that, in that beginning period of time. And we changed our food service three different times. So March 16th to 18th is when we knew we were not going to school anymore and kids were not going to be in, in schools anymore. So I met with the child nutrition staff. We established a chain of command. I really relied on that training that we did for the, the crisis management training that we had started a year prior. We decided that we wanted to distribute the perishable foods that we had in each of our kitchens. And because parents were coming to schools on March 18th, I believe it was, we repackaged those perishable foods into family-sized packages and delivered those when parents came to pick up iPads and student materials. We split into two teams at this point and decided that one team would be working for one week and one team would be at home for a week so that we wouldn't be cross-contaminating at all. Myself and then Jamie Anderson, the assistant director, split into each team, two different teams as well. So we didn't have any contact after March 16th. We met with the bus company during that first week. We established a bus route with 15 stops and we focused on the lower income areas. Starting on March 30th, we began curbside and bus delivery from Westwood. We added three bus stops right away that first week because of community members calling us and asking for that. At that point, we were still really in limbo from the USDA, hearing from the USDA, Minnesota Department of Ed and whether or not we were going to have these regulatory waivers and actually be able to serve food. So it was, it was a really sticky time at that point, as it was for everybody I know. At that point, we were averaging about 1,100 meals. And then within a week, right around April 8th, we realized that because our, our meals went up a ton. I'm not going to do math on the fly and pretend like I can. Anyways, we were averaging like 6,500 meals a week later. So decided that we would open two kitchens. And now nobody was, nobody ended up being home because of the way that the timing worked. So the one team was at Westwood. We opened up the Twin Oaks kitchen and had the other team there. We did the bus deliveries there and the curbside pickup at Westwood so that we didn't have so much traffic crossing. So during that first week in April, we opened the second kitchen. We established a COVID food safety point person and then a backup point person at each, at each team. And came up with standard operating procedures for COVID food safety, which was cleaning and sanitation. You know, what to do if somebody got sick, what to do if you were exposed to somebody who got sick, what to do if you're traveling, based on all of the CDC and Minnesota Department of Health recommendations. And then we made screening of all staff every day and masks mandatory as well. So we had, we started with a check-in every day at April 8th. And again, we were averaging about 6,500 meals per day in that first week of April. Then the second week of April, we decided that we actually had to split into three teams. So we, again, when we were splitting into these teams too, we were considering even things like if we had neighbors that were near each other or kids that were in the same classes or something because we didn't want to cross-contaminate. So it was, it was pretty tricky, but, but we figured it out. We opened up the Hidden Oaks Middle School kitchen as a production kitchen. Part of the reason why we did it is because we were serving a bunch of meals and we needed more, more space to produce them. But the other thing that it allowed us to do was to use the food that we had in-house. A lot of manufacturers were like, hey, we've got this great new packaged ham sandwich and a turkey sandwich. You know, they were coming up with all these new products that were prepackaged and easy. But that's not who we are. You know, we don't like to serve that kind of food. So we, we really wanted to continue with what our values are and what we want kids to be eating. So, and the other thing is we, we have, you know, commodities coming in-house. Whether or not we want them or not, we order those 15 to 18 months prior to when they're being delivered. So they were coming no matter what and they're expensive to store. And so opening up that third kitchen allowed us to start making some of our homemade meals. We served our homemade meat sauces and our homemade chicken Alfredo. And we were able to do brown taco meat and make taco salads and just kind of showcase and show parents some of the things that their kids eat every day. It was a, it was kind of a dual thing because we were able to get our school lunch right into, or right in front of parents so that they could see what their kids were eating every day. And by then, we were serving like 8,500 meals per day. So, and that's kind of where we, I guess 8,900 was where we topped out. But we, we were in a pretty good groove by this point. So then we had, by the end of April, all through May, we were, we were in a really good groove, like I said. And we were able to kind of breathe. A lot of the regulatory waivers had been put in place now. We knew that they were going to go through the end of, they were going to go in through June 10th. Once I had my April or my March claim in, I knew that we were going to be okay. You know, one of the things on top of all the other things that I was not sleeping for during the beginning of COVID was about our budget. You know, I just didn't know how we were going to do this if these regulatory waivers didn't go through. So they went through and that was, like I said, a budget breather for us. And we ended the year strong. And on the next couple of slides, I'll kind of show you a little bit more about the budget. But right now, of course, we're into our fall planning time. We're thinking about those three scenarios, of course. We're waiting for regulatory waivers. When I submitted this, we didn't have any yet. We currently, just last week, USDA extended the regulatory waivers for the school breakfast program and the national school lunch program through August 31st of 2021. Doesn't exactly help us because the way that we served meals was the summer food service program. And summer food service program allows you to bundle meals together. It allows you to serve meals to anybody, no matter what their qualifications are. You don't need to identify anybody. It's just a tally. So it was a very easy way to serve meals to kids that were distance learning. The national school lunch program is a little trickier with the meal pattern and it's a little trickier with, you know, paid students have to pay and. a little trickier with, you know, paid students have to pay and, you know, reduced kids have to get to eat for free. So, so that's a little tricky. It doesn't mean that they're not going to extend that summer food service program and that we won't be able to do that in the, in the fall, but for now, we just start sitting and waiting and hoping that, that we're able to do that. We, we put out our milk bid last year and add it into the contract that we would be able to renew it for two years, so we're just renewing our milk contract. And then, our bread bid, we decided we will not be going out to bid, because it's expensive and time-consuming to go out to bid, and then we haven't gotten a bid for four years. So, we use the one and only bread company right now, and they're not raising our prices, so we're going with them again. We don't really have a choice, but. All right, so, I mentioned a little bit, you know, National School Lunch Program, National School Breakfast Program, opposed to Summer Food Service Program. This is just a real quick comparison. During the National School Lunch Program, which is our normal way that we serve meals, our breakfast participation's about 12%. Our lunch participation's about 64%. And then, it shows you what the reimbursement per meal is. During COVID, when we ran the summer food service program, our average meal participation was 56% for both, because they were bundled meal, they were served breakfast and lunch at the same time. And then, the reimbursement, and it was all free for the students, and so, and the reimbursement's much higher. So, even seeing this, I still was not sleeping at night, because I wasn't sure. And then, when I was able to put this together, unfortunately, I flip-flopped these numbers. So, my spectacular end screwed up, because they're supposed to be flip-flapped. So, the average sale pre-COVID is supposed to be 290,000. Post-COVID, it was 401,000, so we did fine, did great. Anyways, let's just kind of split, split it up, you know, from the beginning of the school year, you know, most of our funding or our revenue comes in from the National School Lunch Program or à la carte. And so, then, of course, right in March is where we ended up having that weird month, where we had National School Lunch Program, Summer Food Service Program, a little bit of à la carte, and where we ended up, and we had spring break in there, you know, the spring break and breaks and stuff like that, which is why there's a flux in some of those numbers. But then, April and May, where we had those solid months with very few days off and those really high numbers of participation, we had great reimbursement. So, we did okay. Yay! And kids ate and loved it, so. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Stacy?
I just wanted to have a comment. I think, just from the feedback I got from people, and I had people asking me, like, should we be doing this? Does this help the district?
Yeah.
I'm like, yeah, it does. So, I, I kept having that, because I, I think you guys did a good job getting it out there and just, and I, I just want to commend the staff and you guys and administration, just for doing a fabulous job. I think it reminded kids of school and being able to see their buddies in line when they're picking things up and things like that. I just heard a really lot of positive things from parents, not having to have one more thing to worry about. So, it really filled, I think, a big need at a time when, when families could really use it, so.
Thank you.
I think you did a great job.
Thanks, thanks.
Any other comments? Jonathan?
Your enthusiasm and your pride in your people shows, and that was just fun to see. And my favorite part of your entire presentation was, that's not us. We wanted to stay true to our values. I just.
Thank you.
You're, you're in a role that I don't think people expect someone to be driven by those sorts of things, and I just think such an asset to us as a district. So, I appreciate that.
Thank you. I love my job.
I was actually going to say the exact same thing that Jonathan just did.
That's why I went first.
Talk about a, a mission-driven leader. You know, what, what you and your staff did was absolutely amazing, and, you know, we've always said that we, you and your staff and entire department served much more than food, and you continued to serve love. So, thank you.
Let me do it.
Michael?
I would add PR to your title now, too, because I have to say, with all the uncertainty and stress, the, the buzz among parents and on social media was so positive, and the excitement of checking the menu every morning and getting, you know, I, we, we check our kids and got in line.
Yeah.
And saw, and people planned their day around this.
Yeah.
They really hated when the meals stopped, so.
Thank you.
Everybody.
I want to add that the comments that I received was that just coming to the school to pick up the lunches kind of gave them the break from the social distancing, allowed them to see the volunteers, the teachers, et cetera. It, and of course, the food service people being so ecstatic to see the kids come in, despite the stress and despite the numbers and stuff like that, I think, I think it was just a, a really good, you know, re-acquaintance each, re-acquaintance each day with the school district, with what they stand for, and just socializing. The, the, the comments and the, and the conversations, even in the transfer of the meals to the cars, was commented on quite a bit, and people really enjoyed it.
Yeah, thank you. It was fun. We, we really enjoyed being able to be curbside. I, I wasn't at Westwood, so I didn't get to do that. Jamie and I would kind of banter about that, because I wanted to see the kids too, but it was fun to see the bus drivers too. So, we, we, at one point, we were cooking 35,000 pounds of ground beef at Hidden Oaks Middle School. And how many 55-gallon drums did we fill? Four? With fat. It was just, which, you know, it's 85, 15, or 90, 10, I mean, it's not fatty meat, but it's just when you have 35,000 pounds of it, it's kind of insane. And so, it was a lot of meat. It was like three days of meat.
Terry?
The only other thing I'd like to add, and I just, you mentioned it earlier, but not only huge kudos to your staff, but the collaboration with Jim's, Jim and Marine's staff and the operations staff and our, our transportation partners.
Absolutely.
Really amazing.
Could not have done it without the entire team, so. So, and I just want to also say, the one thing that I love about school lunch is that it supports farmers and local farmers, and so, by us still buying milk and still buying all this produce and still participating and feeding all of these kids, we were definitely supporting agriculture too, which was really important at this time. So, that's my, the other reason why I love school lunch.
I just want to echo what everyone else has said, but, yeah, you're, what you did went far beyond what the basic serving lunch does, so. And I was, I was amazed at how fast you could get it all coordinated with everybody, with busing and everywhere else and get everyone going, so it was amazing. It's great, thank you.
Relationships matter, that's for sure, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the fall planning update.
Awesome. Well, Emily has done a great job setting it up. You know, the past 100 days really have been challenging, and I think sometimes I forget how challenging some of that time in March and April was. And then, tonight, as I hear Emily and Julie and Marcus and Jim and Marine, and Jim speaking about all the work that has been happening, I have so much gratitude to my team and to our staff across the district, the partnership with parents, as Emily just talked about, the partnership with all of you, with our community members, has, has been amazing. I think it's really important, it's, it's been important to me to be really positive and highlight the amazing work that has been done, but I think, and I think it's really important to remember, we were and still are in a health pandemic. And I think that, that looking at that, we have had to change a lot, and there's a lot more that we're going to have to change. But what we haven't changed in the next slide, Martha, is our commitment to our students and our commitment to our mission. And we know that graduation looked different for our seniors this year, with the virtual graduation and with all of that, but the commitment that we have and that our teachers and all staff have for our kids is something that was absolutely unwavering, and it's a promise we'll continue with whatever the fall looks like. I think during this global pandemic, you know, as Emily just shared, school districts were asked to transform everything that they have done. Over the last many years, we had to totally go to online teaching. And then, as we also had a transition in our country and in our state and the wide range of emotion with the death of George Floyd and continued questions that we've looked at with our work around racial equity and our achievement gap, we know that our challenges moving forward are going to be really great and that we've learned a lot that's going to help us. One of the studies that came out was a, a report on how well MDE, Minnesota Department of Education, responded, and you can see here the four areas of concern that were shared, that they, the, the concern about really having equitable access of everything that you see there, of materials, internet meals and instruction, the communication and the timeliness of some of their communication, talking about instruction and the daily interaction with teachers, how we're going to track attendance. We talked about that a little bit, moving forward, even with a hybrid model during the study session, and then concerns about some of those supports. We also collected data on the next slide, Martha. We also collected data and held, did a couple of different surveys throughout the time to try to be responsive, but then held focus groups with 200 of our parents. And Emily just said it, but the biggest lesson, and it wasn't something we learned, but was reinforced, is the importance of relationships, connections, and socially-emotional learning. So, we know that as we plan forward, that is the absolute rock that we have to figure out how to do really, really well. If you just go back for just a second, because I think it's cute, I don't think that I ever thought that there would be a time in my career where I heard so many, our teachers or so many parents say, my student just wants to get back to school. And I know that wasn't everyone, I, I know that, but, pretty cool. We also really learned, and you got a chance during our study session, you know, to hear more from Marcus on our technology, but we really learned the importance of equitable access to technology and to internet service, and that's something moving forward, we're, we're going to need to continue to pay attention to. We were reminded of the importance of a viable and guaranteed curriculum. You know, our goal in regular school always is that students have a similar experience, and I think there were challenges with that in distance learning, but we really leveraged not only our awesome teachers, but some of our technology to ensure that our standards work was continuing, our common assessments and ways to assess student learning was continuing, and just that virtual connection with adults we know was so important for our kids. We also, through that communication, just some data there to, to highlight some of the increases in CSOW, and you know, our elementary teachers have done a fantastic job communicating with families, with CSOW over the years, so there's so much that I'm grateful to, and that's one of the things, is that that really was a, a groundswell from our teachers a couple of years ago to use CSOW at the elementary level. And you can also see the SchoolAG, some standardization there, and really had our, having our teachers work through Google Meet. We've always known that a one-size-doesn't-fit-all, and our work on personalized learning will, we, we've been reminded that that only has to continue to deepen as we look to learning that is personalized, is purposeful, and is empowering for our students. We're also continuing to, to recognize, you know, during distance learning, there's a difference in levels of adult support that was available to kids. Parents were still working, there was a lot of stress on them. So, as we think about moving into either a distance learning 2.0 or a hybrid model, we've really got to think about what does that mean for the burden that is putting on, on our families. We know through all of this that we've got to continue to deepen our educational and equity and excellence work, and we know that is through listening to our stakeholders, through relationships, and continuing to, to reach the needs of each individual student. I just wanted to remind us, as we, as we look at our, our work around racial equity and all kinds of equity, I just, sometimes I think it's really important, because I think this is a surprise to some of our, our community members, as we look at the changing demographics in our school district, is that, and this was last year's data, but we're about just under 80% of our students being white students, and the rest are, are students of different races and ethnicities. And moving forward, we know that we've got to keep listening to our students, our staff, and to our families as we, as we move forward, and we've been collecting some data, and we'll be collecting more data as we plan for, for the next steps. And recognizing that just as we have gaps that we want to continue to close and students who sometimes are more engaged than others, that we've got some urgency. The sleepless nights, I think, are around an urgency of not knowing what fall looks like, as well as ensuring that we really do make sure that that mission comes to life for each one of our students. And the good news in all of this, for me, is that we have a really solid strategic plan and our priority work that, that we have been, most of that has been work that has been evolving over the years. It really does align with those lessons that I just shared with you, as we continue to deepen our personalized learning, as we continue to deepen our outreach to our stakeholders. So, we've, we don't have new work, we have work around socially-emotional learning and relationships and connections. We're just going to continue to work on really deepening that work. You heard a little bit, the students talking about the caring and committed conversations as part of our, our student voice, our personalized learning and our equity work, and we also heard in a, in a presentation in May, I believe, the next slide, please, Martha, just, just how are we continuing to ensure, you know, through personalized learning, I think one of the, the most important lessons for us is oftentimes in education, learning has been the variable and time has been the constant. And as we continue to get better with personalized learning and really meet kids where they are, learning needs to be the constant and time the variable. And I think during distance learning, that was, that was another really great lesson that we learned that we need to continue to hang on to. We've talked before about working with other districts as we continue to deepen our work, and these are the nine strategies of Reimagine Minnesota that we've been working on as a metro and you can, metro area, 42 districts, and you can see lots of the things that we've already talked about tonight with, with student voice and personalized learning that we'll continue to work on. So, as we look to next year, you all know that we received guidance the end of June or mid-June from MDE, which talked about the three different versions that they expect us to be planning for right now, in-person learning, hybrid learning, and distance learning for next year. I think there's a distinction, when I think about some of the distance learning that we pulled off this spring, I think it was more emergency distance learning. So, to me, distance learning is even different. And within, again, during the study session, we talked a little bit about this, but that hybrid learning option really is the one that's got a lot more questions than answers around it right now, but we've got teams that are working on planning for all of those. Some information that we've collected from families right now, and none of this is binding, but as we've been planning for and are looking at what we need to plan for, we just wanted to get a sense with where families were right now. So, we asked them, we said, what would be your preference in starting the school year? And you can see here about 8% said regardless, they'd like to stay with distance learning. 19% said that hybrid model, and then about 64% said in-person. That data ironically aligns, lines up with the MDE just did a survey with 130,000 respondents that they got across the state, and our data lines up fairly closely to that. The second question that we asked families was if they would be needing and using district transportation. We know, especially if the requirement is going to be around social distancing, if we're able to transport, that transportation is going to look very different. It's going to cost more, we're going to need, you know, different, different ways of doing things, so we might have to, you know, seek some different help from our parents, and we wanted to just get a sense how many people would need transportation or not, and we did get some input back from that question, and, and some families reached out and they said, you know, if, if that comes down to something that you really need, more carpooling, more things like that, let us know. So, I think that's one of the things with our community, as we know more about what we'll do, we'll continue to reach out to them. We also wanted to get a sense of where staff are right now, and you can see here that really great response rate, 936 respondents, and you could see in that first bullet area, if in-person, 85% reported the ability to return to work and 15% were uncertain. That's a really high number. As I talk to superintendents, colleagues across the state, that is really a, a high number of our staff saying, yep, there might be some concerns, but they are willing to return to work. You could see that 90% of them would be willing to wear masks, and it was interesting, because the concern- And it was interesting because the concerns that our staff had were things that we can control. Making sure that, that cleaning is done and things are sanitized and having the supplies that they need. So that was also really good to hear, that those are things that are in our control. And the concerns, as you can see here, is not having some of those public health regulations being, being followed. You know, so that will be on us, that not only do we need to have all the protocols in place, but then we have to be sure that we monitor those to make sure that our students and our staff are safe. So as we move forward, you know, we're looking at this as, let's, let's come back better in everything that we do. Let's just make sure that we're continuing to deepen our work and, and meet the needs of our students in whatever format that is. Go ahead. As you can see on the left side, this is the infographic that we are using internally to just, we needed to get a sense of what our planning process was. So you can see on the left side is where we did the focus groups early on. And the five themes that really emerged from those focus groups, the things that staff, students and parents said pay deep attention to, thinking about adult learning and professional learning. So making sure that parents have the support that they need as well as we move forward. Our district support and logistics, so the transportation, the child nutritious services, all of those things. Health and safety, you can see that from the, the staff survey, how important that that's going to be to our staff and to our families as we come back. Social and emotional wellbeing really was probably, it's, it's in alphabetical order, but that was probably the most important in those focus groups as we saw, is that was the, the most important thing that, that parents, students and staff want to make sure that we're paying attention to. And we know how important that's going to be. You know, one of the things, if you think about what happened in March, we, staff and students had established relationships already, which will be one of the huge challenges if we aren't able to come back in person. And, you know, there'll be ways that we are thinking already about how to solve for that, but that will definitely be a challenge. And then certainly, you know, ensuring that we just have a quality, rigorous teaching and learning and instruction regardless of that format. So what, where we've been working right now is, our departments and our programs have been doing a lot of planning around the three scenarios. And we're at the point where tomorrow, actually, we're going to be meeting in our district strategy team and then later with our full admin team and really begin to integrate that even more. Really make sure that we've got teams that are coming together and talking to each other as we're planning around instruction, health and safety, all of the logistics, community engagement and communication, resources and financials. So we'll be taking a look at that. And the goal is, you know, we just kind of talked a lot about the dial of, of, that has been used, that Governor Walz uses. And we have to be ready to turn that dial. What I heard on the MDE host a call with superintendents weekly. And what I heard last week was, we really have to be ready in a 12-hour time period to change what we're doing. And we're starting to learn some of that because as some situations have come up, whether in our athletic practices that we're having or things like that, we're starting to have to react and make some changes really, really quickly. So as we plan for the three scenarios, we also have to be planning to say, "Hey, something could happen in one building that would make us turn back a dial and the rest of the district looks a different way." Which just further has complexities on top of some of these complexities. So finally, just some of those considerations and challenges that we have is, is, you know, really ensuring the safety of our students and our, our families, ensuring that transportation and all the other services that we have, looking at it from a budget implication. You know, what are things going to look like in terms of how we use staff and, and some of those kinds of things as well. So we have, you know, two more weeks to plan before we hear, we continue to hear that on July 27th, we'll hear from MD and the governor how we can start the year. I want you to know, I am on weekly calls with probably 15 neighborhood superintendents. We had a metro group of probably 30 superintendents meet last week, just sharing, "What are you doing with hybrid models? What are you doing with this?" Today I was on a, a meeting with the mayors and superintendents across the metro, and it really was about superintendents talking about some of the common challenges that they have as they're planning forwards. So we kind of said that we're all in this together, you know, we're trying to help each other and, you know, each of our leaders is contacting and working with their networks and sharing resources and protocols and processes. So ultimately, we can all do what's, what's best for students, knowing that that varies greatly from people's perspectives. And that's going to be part of the challenge as well. So happy to take questions. I know I don't have a lot of details about our plans right now, but I wanted you to have confidence and I want our community to have confidence in our planning, in our process and in our commitment to ensuring that we're listening to needs and we're going to try to make a flexible, seamless plans moving forward.
Mary?
Mary, my, my immediate question is, right now the CDC says that if you come in contact with somebody or somebody has been infected, that there's a, a two-week quarantine. When I think about the classes getting together, that's one of the first things I think of is how is that going to, how is that going to be handled if a kid from a family who becomes infected, a teacher, a whole classroom, does the whole classroom have to go on? Has that ever been, has that yet been directly addressed by the MDE?
Well, yes, yes, and we're getting practice on that because that's what we set up when we, you know, started our athletic practices. We said, "If, if somebody is, you know, exposed, then either the whole pod leaves or more leave." And we've had a couple incidents already where that's been the case. So I think, I think that we have to continue to go deeper into, right, what is that mean an entire school?
Right.
Goes distance learning then, yeah.
Class, the school, I mean, the high school's totally different. I mean, you could somewhat, you know, isolate sometimes different grade levels or elementary classrooms or something like that, but as they get, I mean,
Right.
That's a huge planning conundrum I can imagine. And the rotating effect of that could be huge also as far as contact tracing within the school and who actually has to be quarantined and how you would rotate them back in. And what do you do if the teacher has to be in? You got to get a sub in and what are the protocols for that? So that's, that's what I think about when I, when I think about this. And, and I'm hoping that there's going to be some sort of pressure on the governor to, to modify, or the MDE to modify their ADM model for that hybrid because it doesn't make any sense that, that they're going to punish the hybrid model of all things for the ADM counts and the funding to the schools.
Thanks for your question, Mary. I mean, all of us, I'm sure, are up at night not sleeping, as Emily talked about, just thinking of all of these things. And, you know, wanting our kids back, wanting our kids with, with our staff and, and learning and enjoying each other and wanting things to be really safe.
Have any other comments, questions?
Yeah.
Should know something.
Yeah, we will. And, and we will hopefully be, you know, well on our way with communication by then and letting families know what's happening and what we need and what they need and moving forward.
Yeah, I, I will ask one quick question. After we get, after you get that guidance from MDE,
Yep.
When do you, when, when's your plan for notifying Kyle? And how are we going to let families know what our plans are? I think that's maybe the biggest question we're getting, of course, is, what are we going to do?
Yeah.
And when will we know?
Yeah, and you know, I think for us, you know, our goal is on the 27th, we've got really solid plans in place. I think the question will be, and it kind of is, you know, Mary's question, even if the announcement is, "We're starting out hybrid," there's still 1,000 additional decisions and scenarios within that. So, I mean, I would hope that once, once we hear that, you know, and communicating with parents along the way as well, because I can't imagine then the 28th, we're going to turn around and say, "Here's exactly what we're doing." But, you know, I would hope by that first week of August, we're pretty clear. And then there's still going to be a ton of work to do. You know, we're going to be leaning on our building instructional leadership teams. We've talked about using our MERC teams or our, our building crisis response teams differently to help us with some things, so, yeah.
Enrique had a question.
Enrique? Thank you for that presentation. A lot of details, a lot of information to unpack, for sure. One thing that I'm curious about is, you know, we're hearing a lot about the general education, just kind of a general return to the classroom and what that could look like with the three different options, hybrid, distance or in-classroom. And I'm curious what conversations are happening around special education or those that receive services directly from the school district and what kinds of considerations there will be for that.
Yeah, Enrique, actually tomorrow, we're going to be spending a lot of time talking about, with our leaders and our district strategy team, talking about the hybrid model because we've, you know, there's a lot of different ways you can look at this. You can do kind of that alternate day model where you've got half the kids Monday, Tuesday, everybody's distant learning on Wednesday, the other half in person Thursday, Friday. We've also had conversations about more of a needs-based approach. You know, do we need to have our younger students in school more? Do we need to have students with special needs? Or EL students or other students who struggle in school more? So that's some of what we're talking about right now. And I, I know that Deb Anderson and her team, you know, have been working on that, that specific tier question around students with special needs and how that looks and what can we do to ensure safety, but kids, get kids with, with their teachers more. So I don't have a direct answer, but we're committed to figuring out how to do better than we did during emergency distance learning.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one additional question, if that's okay. And that's, when the guidance comes out from the governor, are they going to give actual implementation guidance too? Or is it just, here are the rules?
That is an excellent question. That is, that, that is an excellent question.
Stay tuned.
I, I don't know, Mary. That's a great question. And I'll let you know on the 27th. I appreciate, appreciate all of your support in this and, and your grace and understanding and helping to communicate with our community. You know, I also want people to know, we're not just sitting around twiddling our thumbs waiting until July 27th. Teams are, are really digging in and examining the data they need to in order for us to be ready to make the best decisions for kids, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the school board three-year agenda. This is something we reviewed during our board retreat. And I just was going to highlight a couple of things in district policy. We had, the first bullet point is new. And I believe that this, if we approve this for this coming year, it would be more about just figuring out what our role is and having some more discussion centered around that. To determine, create and implement board actions through policy, resolution agreements to support and lead district-wide educational equity and excellence centered on the needs of all students. I think we all agree that's what we want to do. It's just what our role is actually going to be. So that will probably need more discussion. And then, under board self-governance, I'm going to skip to the next page. We have the school board evaluation, which we did one last year. And this year we were unable to follow up with that. So we may want to consider that for the spring of '21 to do that again with or without MSBA guidance. If we want to just do it and make that determination if we want them to come and guide us through. And then in the superintendent relations, the annual evaluation, there was some discussion of changing that up a little bit. And that needs to be discussed before, before too long, actually, because the evaluation will be coming based on this coming year. So that needs to be looked at. And reminding everyone to please meet with the superintendent on a one-on-one monthly basis. And then contract negotiations as well. And then in public engagement, this is already a little bit in process, expanding our public engagement and legislative platform. And I know the Public Engagement Committee has been very busy with listening sessions and is going to continue with some. And there was some interest, I believe, indicated that other board members would like to be involved in some of those listening sessions. And I don't remember what this was. I had a note about curriculum committee. I'm not sure what we were referring to with that, except that I think the connection was that we want to make sure that we have community, enough community members involved in the curriculum committee is that's part of the big purpose of having that committee. And students, yes. So that, those are my highlights of the three-year board agenda. And actually mostly in the first year coming up. I don't know if anyone else had anything else they wanted to add. Hopefully, we can get a motion approval on this this evening. So maybe I'd take a motion first.
I'll make the motion.
By Stacy, second?
I'll second.
By Jonathan, you had a comment?
Just on the public engagement. We met not too long ago, I can't remember now. It seemed like a little bit ago. And we are going to be putting out the minutes that we've had from the last couple, and you do have a pledge from us that, that will be coming on a regular basis. And it's kind of scheduling some meetings out into the future so that we can get notice out there. We just haven't talked about it exactly, but we're just kind of in this kind of fact-finding, like figuring out exactly where our role is with these certain agendas kind of things. So that's kind of where we're at. We have a meeting coming up on the 20th, I think, so. But continuing kind of the work that we started this last winter, spring time.
Any other comments on the, Michael?
I was just wondering if, under 2023, under board governance, if we wanted to add new board member onboarding as a bullet point there too? Because that would be two years out from, just to stay consistent. Does that make sense?
Oh, to add it to '22, '23?
Yeah, because that would be another new election.
Yep. Is everyone all right with that?
Yes.
Okay. Not getting big nod, head nods at all, neither way, but, okay, good. Yep, that makes sense, since we'll be doing the same thing again. Okay, if there's no other questions, I'll take a vote then. Is all of us in favor? Say aye.
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 Oppose? Opposed? That motion carries 7-0. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to policy. This is the first reading of policies that were presented earlier. Policy 201 is school board vacancies. That is, these are all policies, these two policies are ones that govern us. So the school board vacancy one is a state statute, but I think the general feeling was that we wanted to leave it in our policies so that it's more easily accessible to the public if they so choose to find out how that works. Did anyone have any other comments about school board vacancies? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to policy 215, school board use of electronic communications. And I believe this is a policy that the MSBA does not have, but they, they reference it during their training sessions. And again, it's a policy that we've already have, so there's no harm in keeping it. And again, for easier access, so. Any other comments or questions on that one? Okay, then we'll move on to the next section. These are the second reading of policies before board approval at the next reading. The first one is the policy 514 on student wellness. This is also, happens to be an annual mandatory policy and is not in that listing for tonight because we're in the process of working on it. And that was presented a while ago. Does anyone have any questions or concerns about the student wellness policy? Okay, then policy 531, memorials for deceased students or staff. I believe this was presented partially for more clarification on how those are handled. And there was a timely issue with graduation that we were looking at it. So does anyone have any comments or questions on that one? Okay, finally we get to approve one, possibly. You received, I believe it was one of the last meetings we had, a huge packet on our school board annual and mandatory policies. And those need to be approved annually. And we can do that, I believe, tonight. And the listing is in our board packet. And the listing is in our board packet, but the actual policies I think you already got. So I would take a motion to approve the annual and mandatory policies.
So made.
By Melissa, second?
Second.
Is that by who?
Me.
Stacy? Any comments or questions, Mary?
Just a clarification, the whole group here, we're we're approving those that are not currently under review. The rest of the group, just to clarify the language.
Yes, all the policies, all the mandatory annual policies are being potentially approved except for policy five fourteen, six oh three and six sixteen.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Yeah, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Shoot, that motion carries seven zero. Okay, then the the last policy. Is policy two oh eight. It's the development, adoption and implementation of policies. So basically how we make our policies.
Policy, policy.
The policy and policies. And the only reason this is coming back is because there's a section on there to address the annual policies that we we all agreed in the work session that we did not need to have them, or the retreat, that we did not need to have them come back four times. So that little caveat was added to it. So it's a minor change in the policy, but it's a clarification. So I would take a motion to approve policy two oh eight with that.
Come in, come in.
Second.
Me.
Stacy, second by Jonathan. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Superintendent report, Dr. Stone.
You know what, I think I gave a long enough report, so I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Any of the administrators in the room? I don't see any heads saying yes, so. Are there any board reports? Okay, all I want to do is say thanks to the staff for everybody that's working around the clock, it seems like this year, especially through the summer. It's a busier summer probably for everybody than they normally would have. But future events, we have a regular school board meeting on August tenth, but we are going to have an additional work session on August third. And then a study session again on August twenty fourth. I will take a motion to adjourn.
So made.
By everybody.
By Melissa, second. By Stacy?
Yeah.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven zero. Thank you.